Verizon says it's 6:00 PM. And I'll call our Monday, December 9, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council, which is a work session in order. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Battle.
Here.
Mr. Clark.
Here.
Ms. Glover.
Here.
This is Lucas Burke.
Here.
Mr. Moody.
Here.
Ms. Simms.
Here.
Mayor Rowe.
Here. And I'll ask everybody to put their phones on vibrate to include our audience. And if you feel the need to talk, please talk in the lobby. With that, Dr. Patton.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. This evening, the first presentation is a briefing on the rezoning application for the former Ocean Marine property. This application went before the Planning Commission on Tuesday, December 3, 2019, and will come before City Council on January 14, 2020. Mr. Bob Baldwin, Deputy City Manager, will make the presentation. The second presentation, Mrs. Gina Harris, Resilience Officer, will present the configuration of city, local, regional organization, and citizen participation in working to achieve the strategies to reduce poverty in the city of Portsmouth as recommended by Thomas P. Miller and Associates for the Poverty Task Force. And finally, we will have a discussion on the community budget engagement. This discussion will be a review by members of City Council of the proposed FY 2021 budget engagement polling questions as recommended by Council for the January 6 budget engagement public hearing. These questions are in your box, in the box. And the purpose of the polling questions is to engage citizens before the formulation of the FY 2021 proposed operating and capital budget improvements. We'll start with Mr. Baldwin.
And good evening, Mayor Rowe, Vice Mayor Lucas Burke, members of City Council. As Dr. Patton indicated, this is a preview of an item that will be coming before you for your January 14, 2020, public hearing, or commonly referred to here as first reading. This is an application on behalf of Fairlead Integrated LLC to rezone about 12 and 1/2 acres of property, former Ocean Marine. That property was rezoned back in 1999. It had proffered conditions attached to it, which remain to this day. This application will move it from a zoning category that was applied to this property with the new zoning ordinance in 2010, our downtown D1 SD, our special district, which still carries those proffers from 1999. The proposed rezoning is to get it out of that zoning district, put it into an industrial conditional zoning, and replace the proffer letter from 1999 with a new proffer. And I'll go over that in a moment. As you can see from the description here, proposed use to expand the use of the property from the former yacht repair to more of a military waterfront services type operation, including military ships. They will also repair vessels like the HRT ferry. They did work on Coast Guard ships. And some of the stuff they are getting under the Huntington Ingalls contract over in Newport News. And they will go over all of that in much more detail with you when they make their presentation in January. I think you're all familiar with the property. You can see it up here on the map to the left. It's the crosshatched peaks where it says the applicant's site. I know there's been some confusion about exactly what's been included in the rezoning application. So we're going to kind of make it clear as we go through the presentation tonight what was included. But it's the crosshatched area. It does not go up as far as the North Pier. This is the, again, the Ocean Marine property that was previously in use by Ocean Marine.
Can you go back?
Sure.
Well, show it on that. It's the next slide, does it?
Okay.
It's all the yellow?
It's the yellow, exactly. What this slide, we just want to give, you know, there's been a lot of changes that have happened around there since the 1999 rezon. Sort of pointing out a few things that happened. Gosport Park, the Path of History, was installed, right adjacent to their property. Of course, the Judicial Center, the Courthouse Project, was built. The Pavilion, which was an item of concern in 1999, was actually constructed and has had recent reinvestment by the city, which is ongoing. And we just want to point out, obviously, where the shipyard is just to the bottom of the photograph there. You can see the beginning of the shipyard. This is a little bit more of a zoom in, just to show you the extent of what's affected by the rezoning. All of this you see in the dashed red line. That is the property that is the Ocean Marine property and is subject to this rezoning. Now, this is a slide that was provided to us by the applicant. It gives you a more of a breakdown, how they intend to use the existing buildings, how they break down their operations in using the existing structures on site. Fairly detailed breakdown. Again, they will go into more details of some of the requirements, the military places on them in terms of the work they do on components for ships, the climate control requirements they have, all those types of things. But this, again, breaks down their intent to use the existing structures and how they would break that down for the site.
With NNS being a new construction building?
Yes, right.
Bill.
Will the work be performed outdoors or indoors?
I think it's going to be very similar, as they've described to us the way it operates today. Primarily, the work is indoors. Even today, they do some work on the backside, outside, that's not generally in public view. So they will continue to have work on the exterior, where the primary work will be used in the facilities inside.
That's their intentions, but what safeguard would we have to prevent it from becoming heavy industrial outdoors?
Yes, or outdoors. Well, I think the biggest issue you're going to have is a lack of space, you know, because the, most of the site is taken up either with existing buildings. They also have some parking and storage on site. So I think there's a limit to how much of the facility they could use for outdoor ship repair type of work unless they were to take some of those buildings down. They've indicated to us, and I just can only speak to how they described to us, they have no intention of doing that. But what they would like to use is continue to use the buildings that were on site.
Paul.
I'm kind of baffled because this is kind of different than what we had planned for the downtown, this downtown area. And we've gotten away from the direction we were going. So now, is this going to be what we're going to do with the waterfront? Oh, you're trying to tell me that they can coexist? And once its people get the use permit, something like that can only expand? What guidelines are we going to have in place to make sure? But we can't. We can't make sure they're going to expand, but this is not what we spoke about for the downtown area. This is way off the base ball, or brand of ball, we're playing down here.
It's two separate areas.
I'm going to get Dr. Patton.
Mr. Battle, this is an existing business that has sold to another business. This is being used in the confines, as Mr. Baldwin said, for ship repair already, as it is now, even before it was sold. All of the covenants that were in place remain in place today that controls the work for the past, how long has Ocean, did Ocean Marine own it for?
20 years.
20 years. So this is an existing business that has sold, has been there 20 years. The city put in place the covenants that have governance over outside repairs and all of that. They cannot do that now with the 20 years that has existed there. So they're buying that building and operating it pretty much how Ocean Marine operated it at this time.
This is an expansion of what Ocean Marine was. Ocean Marine serviced boats no longer than, what, 32 feet long?
Oh, no.
Wait, 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 wait. In the dry storage area. And they did not a lot of the commercial things, but we're talking about governmental contracts, which is the situation here. We're talking about expanding this far beyond a storage facility for boats and minor repairs to boats. You're getting into, that's the big difference here, Dr. Patton. And I hope you can see this. I mean, there's no comparison to a storage facility and small boat repair and a governmental facility that'll be handling military ships. So that's not, quick pro quo here, so let's not say that.
The Chair's going to recognize Elizabeth, and then Bill.
But if we're having constructive speaking, is that your way of saying, well, we're going to move on?
Yes, sir.
Before people finish their exchange?
I thought you were finished.
Oh, well, you do that often.
Well...
Look, let's move forward.
You paused, and I thought you were finished.
Well, we were still talking, but go ahead to the next person, if you'd like.
Finish your thought.
Well, we'll improve it. Do you understand? This is not a quick pro quo.
What else?
We're talking about expanding. These folk have come here for business.
Right.
Business alike across the street, not a business of storage and repair to mount a boat. That's not what this is about. So it's not a quick pro quo that we're working here. And we don't know how far, or how deep they're going to get into the bidding process to provide services. What we're doing is opening the door for them, and we don't know where it's going to go once we approve this. But what I'm saying is, if we're turning around, if we don't have the goals and objectives for down here that we've spoken about together, if we're changing, then let me know that this is a change, and that's what we're going to do here. But...
I think it would be important that we all understand that this is an application that was submitted by a party other than the city, and we're being briefed on this. We'll get a chance to debate this. I think this is the time for us to ask questions, what you are doing.
Yeah.
But it's not being advocated. But we don't advocate for rezoning applications. This matter will come before us in January.
Yes, but that's not what I'm talking about. I'm talking about, we're going in a certain direction, and now we're changing. We're not going in that direction, and...
But Paul, your comments will be addressed to us because we're going to decide whether or not this application gets approved or not.
Well, that's who I'm addressing it for when I say, we were moving in another direction, and now we're going in this direction, you know?
And we heard you.
You're kind of throwing me off base here.
Well, and we're seven people in this council, so we need to talk amongst ourselves. And we follow Robert's Rules of Order, which says each person gets a chance to speak one time before they speak a second time. And Councilwoman Simms...
But you don't cut them off before they're finished.
Okay, I apologize. I apologize to you, Paul, because I thought you had stopped. Now, recognize Elizabeth Simms.
Okay. Three comments. Number one, there's no city change in direction. It is, A, this is private property from a private business requesting a change. The city plans for the Crawford Gateway begin here at this building and go north to the river. They don't begin in the industrial zone, which is what that has always been since 1999 and before you and I were born. Number two, that has not just been a dry storage facility. They have been working on very large, better than 100-foot vessels and doing small ship repair for 20 years. That big building that says Fairlead Blast and Paint Bay has done some of the finest yacht painting in the world. There have been dozens of 100-foot yachts that have come in from Europe to be painted in that building under the Ocean Marine banner. And third, they can't and won't bring up any big military ships here because they don't have room, and they don't have any room to expand, because that's all the property there is, and they're completely surrounded. What they're going to do for, my understanding, what they intend to do for Huntington Ingalls is manufacture and work on pieces that will then be trucked over to Newport News to go in ships, where Newport News has run out of space. And they're doing off-site work there in these buildings where they have to have all these military specs and whatever.
Okay. Chair recognizes Shannon.
No, no.
Didn't you speak?
He had asked for the floor before I did.
Okay. But again, Robert's Rule says that before you speak a second time, everybody gets a chance to speak one time.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we need a number system where number two up, number three up.
You patient, folks. Everybody will get a chance to speak as many times as you want. Go ahead, Bill. Oh, he's the first.
I'm up again. My point is that the, obviously, the covenants that the city manager spoke of that have been in place for, what, 20 years?
20 plus years.
They've worked with the painting that's taking place. Speaking for me, I've never received complaint one about any of the work going on there. I do think it would be good to furnish all the members of council that agreement contained in the covenants, so we can see those. I'm supportive as long as the covenants remain in place, because I think that's been the safety net to make sure that heavy industrial doesn't encroach beyond the perimeters. And the work, for the most part, stays inside, not outside.
You want the floor now, please.
And then...
Lisa.
Yes, okay.
And then Nate Defies. You desire the floor.
So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you for your patience, everybody.
One of the things I wanted to add to the discussion, as one of the liaisons to the Planning Commission, I participated in the Planning Commission meeting with the leadership of Fairlead. And one of the concerns was that because it is so close in proximity to our entertainment venue, that we didn't want to have dust blasting and things going on while we were having entertainment concerts or any type of entertainment there. And what the leadership agreed to, they already have a policy and a strategy in place where if we have, if they have to do certain work that would interfere with what the operation is at the Pavilion at that time, that those operations would be suspended and that they would work around any situations that might arise in terms of the entertainment venue. So I thought that that was a good recommendation.
I think the covenants address...
They do. They speak to that, but...
All right, Lisa's got the floor.
I was going to echo that, too, because I was present for the presentation with Fairlead offices, and I thought that they, the applicant, did a good job of presenting this packet, and also staff of mentioning it as well. But one of the questions that came up with the Commissioner, Peter Youngblood, he mentioned, would there be some activity on the North Pier? And they said that they would, at some point in time, they would take that on as an additional project. And I'm sure Mr. Baldwin will get to that. So I thought that that was a great partnership for us. And I think our City Hall building, to Paul's concern, separates kind of like our industrial district from our, you know, what would be our business kind of entertainment development district. So, you know, that has always existed, and we're just trying to build up the other half. But the presentation that we received during the Planning Commission meeting was very supportive of this, in them accommodating our surrounding venues as well. And it's my understanding that all of the work would be done inside of the units.
Which I support it, and I have comments on both sides of it. I agree that we don't want heavy blasting and stuff outdoors. A lot of people might not remember, we had an issue, I believe it was the late '80s, they were painting the USS Comfort across the river, and all the cars in the garage and in the back parking lots were speckled with white paint. They had to go and have them compounded painted or whatever else. Fairlead, my office in Newport News, is right across the street from their operation over there, and that is heavy commercial, where they do have these vessels out of the water, blasting the bottoms, painting them, repairing them. And like has been said, they don't really have the space here as to what the operation is in Newport News. So I'm happy for them to come here, but I agree that we don't want that activity outside because when it does occur outside, it doesn't matter what time of day, our state vehicles in Newport News at certain times do get covered with blasting material and other items. So, but I'm happy for them to come here, but if they're going to, you know, do it inside that building, I think that would be great.
All right, my turn. I have two questions. One, isn't it true that the EDA owns the North Pier?
That's correct.
It's outside of this application?
That is correct.
The second, aren't there deed restrictions on the existing property that we're calling Ocean Marine?
Right, and that's what we're referring to, the covenants and restrictions, they do. They were established by the IDA back in 1999. Now they're under the control of the EDA.
And they cannot be changed? And that's a question to both you and to Solomon by a zoning process?
That's correct.
They have to be changed by the grantor of the...
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct. Under our zoning ordinance, private contracts are not part of our zoning authority.
And Senator here, I think it was you, Bill, I think it would be useful to have those deed restrictions.
We'll get them.
All right. More questions.
Let's go to my last slide here.
Pause, ask for the floor.
Also, with the newer military ships, we don't know what type of chemicals they'll be dealing with, because all of that is top secret. As a city that is 121 out of 133 in reference to health in the state of Virginia, we need to be very cognitive of something like this, not only for the human factor, but our waterways. Fish within a certain limit now, we can't even eat. And I'm all for economic development. I'm just, if that's what we're going to do, okay. But we have a lot of issues to address before we can allow something like that. And again, we can't understate the human and the fish life problems. I've gone to lots of other cities with shipyards, and the water is dead. There's no life in the water. So we have to be, and yes, it might be D or Z, or it's under this condition, but once you allow a use permit, if all the bases aren't covered, this thing takes off into an area that we might not be able to stop. Again, I'm for economic development. I think that this is, if that's what we're going to do down here, but when you've got people around and you're just bringing something down and just like this and not testing all of the things, or inquiring about all of the things that we should, it's a true liability to a city and its people and its marine life.
Thank you. Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I just want the last slide here. Question came up about proffers. This is a copy of their proffer letter they submitted. What you see on the left side, that's the ceasing of operations that will cause noise dust or nuisance-type activities if there's a performance going on over at the Pavilion. They're going to get their work with the city on those types of issues. One of the discussions we had with the applicant early on was, in the event that this business were either to not go in, you know, this is the industrial zone property, if this business were to go out of business at some point in the future, there are a lot of uses in the industrial district that the city may not necessarily want to go on that property, for example, a salvage yard or recycling center or something. So we asked the applicant to take a look at the zoning uses that are allowed in the IN district, and anything that they did not want to have on the property, they did not feel was necessary, they proffered to not allow those. So that sheet of the Appendix A you see on the right-hand side, that's all the types of uses that would not be permitted on this property unless the, if the council were to approve the rezoning and accept the proffers, then these uses would not be allowed on that property until some future date the owner would come back and request a modification through a rezoning application. Bill.
Are the deed restrictions or the covenants contained in that list as well?
No, those are, again, private contracts between the EDA and the property owner. So they're not rolled into a proffer letter.
Okay. So that has nothing to do with the covenants?
That's a second. That's another layer of agreements, protection, exactly.
Paul.
As a city council, it would be wise for us to take that particular document and go over each and everything in a nice, slow fashion and think about other things that might be needed to add to that list. You just don't, we just don't see it and make a decision. We have to touch it, feel it, spend some time with it. And these are the things that I'd be trying to enlighten us about rather than to just move. And yeah, it's here, and we not examine the documents. That, we would need to examine that document and see how beneficial and does it cover all the bases needed to protect the city, its citizens, and its marine life.
Dr. Patton, would you have that particular document that's on the screen sent to council tomorrow?
Yes, we'll have that with the covenants also.
Okay.
So, question. So prohibited uses, so the only one use would be for what it is?
Right, it's a very narrow band of uses for what they do. That was the idea. Let's focus on what you do and not open the door to other things down there when you move into this industrial zone.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, in the same vein as Councilman Battle's question, when this issue first came up, we did require the applicant to revisit what it is they want to do from a zoning perspective, since that issue was coming to City Council, and to rebut, refine, narrow, or whatever they needed to do to fit this particular use, understanding there would be these kinds of concerns. So staff, one of the earlier meetings beforehand was in my office with Mr. Baldwin and Representative from Fairlead to precisely put everything in front of everyone so that we would be understanding what the application was and how it would go forward. So we did understand that would be a question from council. And so those questions were put out in front at the beginning, understanding that there were the deed restrictions, but also that there's a zoning matter which is separate and apart for which council has to get comfortable with in order to move the process forward. So that is why you will see in this zoning application, precision in terms of what's being moved forward, as opposed to just simply moving forward. The only other thing I would add is that this is the current footprint, as some of you have alluded to. This is the current footprint of Ocean Marine that we're dealing with, which is the footprint that has both zoning restrictions and deed restrictions. This is not an expansion.
Getting back to the economic development aspect, how many jobs are we talking about?
200. They had indicated approximately 200 jobs.
What kind of salary range?
They did say a salary.
They did, Councilman Moody. Let me bring that to you tomorrow, because I don't want to misstate it. And I know it's been quoted in a couple of different places, but I want to make sure I'm accurate about...
200 jobs, significant.
It is. And of course, they're government jobs, so they're not, they can be significant in terms of the pay.
Right.
And benefits.
And benefits, correct.
I have two questions. This is a conditional zoning. It's not, does it contain a use permit?
No, this will be a by right use.
All right, then my next question is, proffers can only be made by the applicant?
Yes.
Voluntary.
Voluntary.
That's correct.
We cannot tell the applicant to make a proffer.
And you make a good point, especially over the last, I want to say, two or three years, we have had a number of iterations of the law in Virginia on proffers and it would probably behoove us to perhaps even as early as tomorrow, update you all on what the new condition is. But we'll definitely do it by January if we can't get it together by tomorrow.
I think we can get it.
Well, we've got older ones and I don't want to rely on the older ones because I know we've had some changes in this year too.
Another question. When you send out the deed restrictions and we get it, read it, we read it and we like it, let's say the majority of council likes the deed restrictions, but the applicant wants the EDA to vacate those deed restrictions, what next?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, my office has advised city staff to align this process such that the zoning application would come to city council first and foremost such that if there is a zoning issue, it will not, the city council will address that particular issue such that there's no opportunity for the deed restrictions to overwhelm the zoning decision. That is the process as it's been put in place so that council has an opportunity to address the zoning issues. And then if there's a need to align one with the other, we have advised at its best that the zoning issue be addressed first and foremost and then the deed issues would be available to the EDA with the understanding of what the zoning is on that property.
I get that. But let's say that the zoning gets passed and then the owner of the property wants to vacate deed restrictions that city council, although we're not the grantor, likes, how do we reconcile that? And you don't have to answer it right now. I think that this needs some thought.
Sure.
Paul?
I'm concerned when I say to my colleagues that this is an expansion and then one of the brightest attorneys in the area come up and say, it's not an expansion. When they have about 15 people that work there now and by his own lips, he said it'll be up to 200 people there. And then he come back and say, no, it's not an expansion. See, these are things that we have to, as council members, address because we know that that does not make sense, that one statement you say is not an expansion and then you come back with another statement that say, well, there's 200 people. You see, these are the things that we have to be concerned with. And no matter what they review or what our subordinates go over, the bug stops with us and we're responsible. They're shielded by us. We have to eat all of this. So while they are saying it's a good thing and pulling it to us and you did the review with the people as well as Shannon or whoever, we still have to be real slow with something like this and not just sit down. We need a workshop together on a project like this because we might not know what we're getting into here.
Well, that's the purpose of this meeting.
And that's the purpose of me saying the things that I say, Mr. Mayor.
Sure.
Because we seem to not be paying these things any attention and these are things we have to make.
Paul, we haven't voted yet and we'll vote twice and I recognize.
And I hope we don't vote.
Well, one of the things I wanted to bring some clarity to in terms of the question of expansion, initially, they intend to come in with a smaller group of employees. And so when you talk about expansion, they have to have skilled labors to do the job that they need to do. So as the contracts come online, more job training and more opportunities will become available. The property as it states, there will be no expansion of the property, but hold on.
What you're talking about size? Who are talking about this?
Hold on, hold on, let me finish what I was saying, then we can have a conversation. But what I'm sharing with you is the jobs that will be available at its inception when they start out may be small, but as they begin to get these opportunities, then they're gonna need more skilled labor to meet the demand of what they have to deliver. So over time, we expect, the owner expects over time that they will have to train workforce development, bring in some folks to train, and there will be additional job opportunities created. Now you can call that expansion, I call that opportunities and that's what it is.
Well, I'm loving that you're calling it opportunity. I'm just trying to stay abreast with the cost. And expansion would mean, let me explain what I mean by expansion, that the hustle, waltz, everyday routine is 100-fold of what it is now in reference to sound, which is noise, in reference to particles in the air. And it's just a couple of things, a project like this, again, we got to do a lot of.
Those got to evaluate. I'm not clear on the deed restrictions versus the proffers. Has Fairleigh expressed some heartburn, referenced the deed restrictions? And I'm directing this to the city attorney.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, no. What we have said to them from the get-go is that they have two issues they have to deal with to move forward, both a zoning issue and a deed restriction issues. They know that there are deed restrictions that have been in place for Fairpitter at the time. Their main concern has been the zoning issue. But there again, we have told them from the get-go, those two documents have to harmonize in order to move forward. You can't, one can't outstrip the other.
So there should be no problem with the deed restrictions? I think they are because if I recall correctly, this is recollection, deed restrictions, there's no military vessels get repaired at this site. And if that's the case, then it's kind of cater corner to what they want to do.
And so what I suspect I will be coming back to you all with is that your zoning approvals will provide the parameter for any deed restriction. You can't expand beyond that.
You know, that's why when we have a matter like this, we need to have all of the pieces in our possession so we can discuss it fully.
Sure.
I don't think anybody at the table knows all the content of that deed restriction.
Correct.
I know there are a lot of elements because I was here 20 years ago when they were put in place, but I can't, I can't sit here and probably name one.
Certainly.
Lesmith, just ask for the floor.
I think that we've asked for a lot more information and perhaps we can come back to the table in January prior to having this come before and when we have all the information.
When does this come?
January 14th.
Okay, then we have time.
You have a January 13th meeting?
Yeah.
So? And we'll get the proffers.
We'll get this done as soon as you can. We'll have a couple of weeks to think about it at home and then we'll know what our question is.
Maybe we need to throw, put it back some because we won't be here one day, what is it, the sixth? We'll be here both days?
Four days.
Okay.
Yeah, 13th and 14th.
Now, can we as a body put restrictions in?
That was my question, not a proffer. This is not a conditional, that's why I asked the question, is a rezoning according to Mr. Baldwin, it's not a conditional use permit. If it was a conditional use permit, we could. Because it's conditional zoning, only the applicant can provide the proffers. We cannot demand, under state code, that he give any more proffers than what he's done.
Right, but can we give a conditional permit? We can't?
No.
So you're saying they can come here and there's no restrictions we can put on them as a city council?
You want to answer that?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of city council, you have zoning existing for that property. That provides the outside parameter for existing uses. To the extent that folks want to provide certain proffers with regard to moving forward, you certainly make those determinations in conjunction with a public hearing and the city council vote. That is the outside parameter in the general process with regard to dealing with this matter. What I would say, as I said before, we probably need to update you all on the current state as it exists with proffers so that you have an understanding of where the legal limits are with regard to what some might call restrictions and how they come up. In this discussion, we have put before you the two governors on this process, one being the zoning and the other being the deed held by the EDA. So there are two elements of it for which you can vote and have some level of input in terms of that operation, but there are some limits. It's not unlimited. The city council's power in terms of this process is not unlimited.
Well, let me give you an example. So as a city body, we can't say through the company that we know you'll be operating a lot of machinery and we wouldn't like for your machinery not to exceed so many decimeters in sound.
You have a city code that already addresses that. You already have a sound code that addresses noise.
Well, have we thought about this in reference to the sound code? Have we asked them about the sound that's gonna be accumulated at the time?
I...
You see what I'm saying?
I understand.
And we're talking about the 14th and we have so many things to discuss about this.
Yeah, the only thing I would say, Councilman, is that the noise code exists across the board for everyone and we enforce that on households and businesses every day. So we wouldn't have, there's not a...
Will they be exceeding?
And if they are, they would be enforced against as anyone else would.
Who's gonna enforce them?
The police department does that every day.
Every day.
All right, hold on a second.
So you mean the police department's gonna go into that company and say, you can't use your machine, this many machines to chip these boots?
It would exceed them.
Well, are they gonna pay for the...
Let him answer your question.
We enforce the noise ordinance against everyone equally.
Do we have the proper oversight for something of that magnitude?
We have a...
Do we specifically deal with that? Are we gonna add that on to the police department because a venture like that would need a special unit to keep them in compliance?
We would use what we have and what we always use in the regular operation of the city. If there's an additional need, we deal with those things on a daily basis.
So we wouldn't problem at all, okay.
Lesmith, and then Bill?
I think that the way I understand this is, as a city council, we only have, can deal with these certain types of proffers, but the Economic Development Authority as the owner of the, the grantor of the deed could negotiate that they can't use yellow paint or they can't work on Tuesday or whatever it is they work out with him. Is that, I mean, I'm being silly, but that's where those specifics will come into play.
The deed has...
It's the deed restriction with the EDA.
The deed has some elements of control that are not within the zoning process.
But to make sure, I don't, the deed restrictions are there and they would stand there forever unless the owner wants them vacated. That initiates the discussion.
Right.
The EDA could fold their arms across their chest and say, no, they stand.
Right.
If they don't want to negotiate. And so we're speculating on something that's gonna take place beyond the 28th and that's another point, that we have the whole month of January to discuss this. It's not like we're rushing to get this thing done because our second vote comes on the 28th. And, you know, we have the public hearing, we have the discussion and it won't be the first time if we're not ready to vote on the 28th to impose more time on ourselves. So let's not give the impression that this is, we gotta decide this thing tonight.
No.
Now, one, and Bill, I'm gonna recognize you. I think it would be very useful if you could brief us on the state of the state code with proffers because I think we need to have a clear understanding that we can't, it's not like a Christmas wish list where you can, we like all but the last two.
Right.
And we want to strike those. It's either all or none, isn't that correct?
Certainly, because they are voluntary, yes.
So we don't get a chance to come through and say, we like every other one?
Mm-hmm.
All right, Bill, just ask for the floor. Then I'll get a chance. Regarding the property, doesn't a deed restriction have more force of the law behind it? And I think that's in the conveyance of the property, not the use, is that correct?
It is in the conveyance of the property.
Right.
And so in some respects, it can be more restrictive than a zoning decision might be.
Right. And the reason why I ask that, obviously, military vessels, that would probably be a no-go for them since most of their work is military oriented. So the deed restrictions would have to be amended in some shape or form. Now, they already agreeing to these proffers and what I'm getting at, those proffers become part of a deed restriction.
Um, no, they would not necessarily become part of the deed restriction, but as I said before, in all likelihood, you're not gonna have deed restrictions that are gonna exceed the ultimate zoning decision. So recognizing this is what you intend to do, if you're an owner and you have concerns about that property placement and whatnot, you would not provide more than what is necessary for the operation.
But the deed restriction can't be restrictive to military vessels and we allow that. What I'm getting at, the deed restriction would have to be amended if that's the consensus of council or consensus of EDA.
Right. You, yes, you would expect the two documents to align themselves at the end of the process. And so as the mayor said, once you all right now appear to be at the front end of the process in terms of decision-making, EDA will come back behind it and conceivably, they would align it with the parameters.
Have to be in alignment.
Correct.
Okay. And I think it's really important to understand that there is gonna be a request for an amendment to the deed restrictions because, again, I would bet a nickel and a lunch that one of the restrictions is no military, that's what I do...
It is.
And so that opens the door to negotiations. And my point is, let's say that there is a bright line in the deed restrictions that we like, that you can't cross that line. And let's say that the applicant, the owner, because it's not an applicant at that time, the owner wants that particular deed restriction to be vacated. My question is, how do we reconcile that? We're not the grantor.
It's the EDA.
Correct. That would be up to the EDA.
Right. And so we're left with the power of persuasion then.
Have to trust the people we appointed.
Yeah.
That's exactly right.
Oh, no.
This has been a good discussion, folks. And again, this is, I want the public to understand that this is a matter that will come before Council and the discussion will be amongst Council. And it will be up to us to come together on whether or not this gets approved or not.
Well, go ahead, sir. I'm sorry.
But to summarize what we've asked the City Manager to get out in the quickest possible way, that document that's before us, the current deed restrictions.
Covenant.
And then, Solomon, can you give us a briefing tomorrow night? Can we have time to do that?
We will start the process, Mayor. And I just need, I'd say that because it's been, there were changes, I want to say last year, and the last time we had a presentation, it was maybe two years ago. So I just want to make sure that we have the...
Changes are not city-friendly, if I remember correctly, too.
No, they're not.
We did a little bit of worm turning. I think Mr. Baldwin can probably tell you better than I.
When I say city, I mean local government friendly.
They did a little better the last time.
A little better the last time. That's what I thought. It got a little better than the first iteration.
Elizabeth, you asked for the floor. Paul, you asked for the floor.
When the EDA put these documents together, we have to approve them. If there's something on them that...
No, we don't.
We don't have to approve them.
This is not the EDA.
That's why it's important.
I mean, well, we have to approve the use permit and that we...
There's no use permit on this.
Talking about...
No, I mean, for the project, we have to approve the project. Therefore, if the EDA has something that we don't sit with, we have the right to ask the EDA to change it. It's not a dictatorship with the EDA. We're the head group in charge. If they put something on that we don't think or don't have enough, then we say to them, "Well, maybe we need to add some more," but see, what I'm trying to get at is to understand, we're the final on this project, not the EDA. That means the complete project cannot go through unless we're comfortable with it. Now, we can do it in two fashions. We can do it negligible or we can do it prudent like the folk thought we would be when they elected us.
Bill.
Isn't it by right?
The use would be by right if you approved the rezoning.
Yeah.
And keeping in mind the current use is permitted.
Yeah, that's what I'm...
Before, that's correct.
So the project is by right.
It is.
Did I say a hand up over here?
Just last comment. I mean, the Planning Commission has already approved this to go forward to us, and there's a process that it ends with Planning Commission. It comes to City Council within a certain amount of timeframe that we would look at it, review it, and vote twice on it. And if all else fails, if it don't go, they're still allowed to continue their marine repair, which is what that industrial site calls for.
Yes. That's it.
And what they've been doing for 20 years.
Yes.
Any further questions?
Yes, but they could, do they have the right to do it for the military?
Not at the present.
That's a, that's a, this is not military. This is not the same, this is not a quick quote-quote. This is a different type of business that will be here becoming. You understand? This, this, it's not like it was. This is military. This is...
We all understand that. What we have before us is a request to rezone the property conditionally with those proffers. And...
Well, have we read them? Do we know what they say? How can we do that if we don't look at it?
We're going to get more information from Dr. Patton.
I don't, I don't want to see them myself. I don't want a translation.
No, 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 no. She's going to send you that document. That is the document right there tomorrow, okay? Can somebody make them tonight?
Um...
Yes.
They have a copy.
They're in our box.
They're in our box.
They're in our box.
They're in our box.
They're already in your box.
They're in the box.
They're in your box.
Please have one of your staff people make a paper copy of those and pass them out tonight.
Are the proffers in their, in their box?
They're in their box.
Yes.
You're not getting the point.
I understand.
They're in the paper box.
They're in the box there. Your box on the computer.
Oh.
Ladies and gentlemen, how difficult is it just to make a paper copy of that and get, pass it out tonight so that we can get past this?
We can get that. We'll use, okay.
All right. Thank you. We've got time.
End of mine.
Now, we're next, item number two.
Now, I'm going to get it fixed because I'm going to put new paper in a couple times. We'll do it. Sorry.
All right, Mayor, Vice Mayor, coming forward will be Mrs. Gina Harris, Resilience Officer, looking at the Poverty Task Force and taking away.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council, this evening, I am reporting back on the establishment of the configuration of the Poverty Task Force. Addressing poverty requires an approach with short and long-term goals that will be extended over a period of five to 10 years. As we realize, there is no simple solution to poverty. Implementing a Poverty Task Force will provide structure for the city to address poverty through its existing and future institutions. This structure will require staff, support, and partnering with outside agencies and the Portsmouth community at large. On August 8, 2017, Dr. Patton briefed City Council on the status of the responsibility to create a City Council Task Force on Poverty. In February 2018, the City of Portsmouth entered into a contract with Thomas P. Miller and Associates to conduct a poverty study and to make recommendations to City Council. Between February 2018 and June 2019, Thomas P. Miller and Associates, with the Planning Department, the City Manager's Office, and a variety of community stakeholders to collect data and to develop its report. On September 23, 2019, Emily Crowser, Assistant Director for Thomas P. Miller and Associates, reported the findings of the Portsmouth Poverty Task Force to City Council. Of significance, poverty impacts more than 16,000 adults and children in the City of Portsmouth. The number of adults impacted by poverty is 8,914, and there are 7,314 young individuals younger than the age of 18 impacted by poverty. The poverty rate for Portsmouth is 17.9%, which far exceeds the Commonwealth of Virginia's rate of 10.6% and the national rate of 13.4%. In the written report, there are recommendations for City Council and for the Poverty Task Force. Based on Thomas P. Miller and Associates' research, education, workforce, city services, and crime slash policing were key areas of focus. As established by City Council on August 8, 2017, the task force focus areas are education, healthy thriving communities, and workforce development, which encapsulates Thomas P. Miller and Associates' areas of focus. The organizational chart for the Poverty Task Force presents a clear picture of the structure. The resilience officer will lead the oversight of the task force with assistance provided by the Planning Department and the City Manager's Office. The steering committee, in partnership with city, local, and regional organizations, as well as citizens, guiding the work of the three subcommittees, as you can see, education, healthy thriving communities, and workforce development. The subcommittees will have representatives from agencies that can best address the identified specific needs. Under each subcommittee, you will see organizations identified to address this large poverty initiative, as you can see, under each subcommittee. The overarching goal of the Poverty Task Force is to build transformative and collaborative strategies for reducing poverty in the City of Portsmouth and empowering all citizens with the opportunity to be successful. While Thomas P. Miller and Associates have recommended strategies to address poverty, each subcommittee will formulate the goals they will work to address the reduction of poverty within the City of Portsmouth. Our next steps, appoint citizen members. Steering Committee will have two citizens and the subcommittees will have two citizens each for a total of six subcommittee members. Appoint council liaison, and we will provide future briefings to Council regarding our success with the poverty initiatives.
So how large is this going to be?
Go back to your frame. Each of these, what we're proposing is each of these are regional and city organizations that are already doing work in these areas, each of these. So what we're proposing is, and as cities have done, is that representatives, at least one or two, because everybody who's coming from one organization will not be able to come every time. So if there were two people for each of these, and each of these, and each of these, and then with each of them, there are two citizens. So we're looking at a configuration of each of these subcommittees could be anywhere from 15 to 20 representatives in the subcommittees.
And as one can see, the Healthy Thriving Communities is the largest subcommittee.
Okay. Questions, comments?
Well, first of all, I have a comment and then I have a question. First of all, I'm really excited about you, Ms. Harris, leading this effort, and we look forward to very positive and encouraging our results as we go forward. Based on this, this format, have you all looked at other cities perhaps that have engaged in this type of effort? And is that where this came from, this format?
Yes, this format was developed as a result of looking at the cities that were highlighted in the Thomas P. Miller and Associates report. Some of those cities included, the Virginia cities included Richmond, Petersburg, and Norfolk, Virginia.
Wonderful. Did you look outside the state?
Yes, there are cities outside of the State of Virginia that have poverty initiatives as well.
Okay. At least I've got a question.
Under the Healthy Thriving Communities, I know, I see community action partnership, but that doesn't list which specific one. I mean, Stop Inc. had requested, so...
We, we, there are, these are the ones that are proposed, but this, the steering committee will look and vet each of these, and there will be more added to these that are in those subcommittees. So we didn't put every group up there.
Right, right.
Right.
Mm-hmm. Good start. Good work.
What we like, Mayor, to start in January, is the starting point of this work, is that, and you have this in the box, is that we provide for you, one of the things that's recommended is that, it is, it is recommended that persons that we put on these that are citizens have some interests or tie into the areas of which we are going to, you all will name people to be a part. The other thing that Thomas P. Miller indicated that, when you have worked like this, and it's long-term work.
Yes.
It's long-term work, that we must understand that these groups will continue to work, but everybody is not going to be able to attend every meeting that's held. And what the group will determine is whether or not they will have, start off with monthly meetings and those kinds of configurations. So this is a big task, this is a big task, and it is, as I indicated, and as the research we have done, is that it's not something that's going to happen overnight, it's going to take years. Council supported in this budget of 2019, funding that supports the Poverty Task Force and years going forward. It is hoped that Council will continue, that we seriously address the issues that are before us in this city to reduce, and the statement is reduce. We could come back every year and say, in these areas where we see reductions, these are goals that will be set and measurable. I mean, it's, you've got to be held to the far to get this done.
Sure.
And this is the start of it in January.
Those got the floor?
You know, while we're speaking of poverty, I think you identified early on the number of people within City Hall that their salary is equated to the level or below poverty level.
Yes.
I think it'd be good, at appropriate time, to give us an update on where we stand in raising that bar.
We will. That's going to start with discussions in January on the budget.
Okay.
You had asked for that. That's what we said we'll start.
Any other? All right. Do we need to take a technology recess for a minute? We don't? Okay. Then let's proceed.
Well, Mayor, I need, are you all, what are you all saying? You're telling collectively?
I think that's exactly what we're saying.
We like it.
Okay, very good.
Thank you for validating that.
Thank you, Mayor. All right, so that is the last presentation for this evening.
Well, no, you've got the Community Budget Engagement.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's the last presentation. This is a discussion. All right, if you...
And actually, we have a letter that was sent to all of Council from Tyrone Heinz that you probably, in case you didn't get it, I gave you a paper copy and I think most of the people out there. And so let's do that, then we'll do, let's do the Community Budget Engagement, and then we'll take up the Mountain Hermitage.
All right.
And I have one.
And Shannon's got one. Anybody else got one?
Yes.
And she's got one. All right. And Bill's got one.
Okay.
I can keep track of that. It's only three.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, at our last meeting, Councilman Moody asked in the January 6th, Community Public Budget Engagement, that there be an opportunity for citizens to participate in a polling. We don't call it a survey, it's a polling. And we have posted last year a polling, but it was all online, and this year, citizens will be able to participate in it, in this, doing the budget engage, Community Budget Engagement. On that same date, it will go online and it will remain online until a timeframe in February. This, what you have in front of you. Last year, we had almost 600 and something respondents online to our polling. This information that you see here, these questions, help us to see from, for example, the ZIP code, where the respondents are coming from across the region, where things that they may identify in here, where it is impacted, where they live. We have, what is your connection to the City of Portsmouth? Describe individuals residing in your household. Age of respondent and... Age of respondent, and I was one to say to my team, why is age important? And then they indicated that, and there are a plethora of things that speaks to age. It speaks to, we, the number of citizens, which we usually will say something like, do you have children in Portsmouth Public Schools or things like that? If they answer there, then we would know, you know, kind of the parameters of what the respondents are as it pertains to this. What is your level of education? What is your ethnicity? Would you support a real estate tax increase to support the enhancement of city services? And one of the things we want to put on here, on the frame, is show what one cent equals, what two cent equals, and what three cent equals. We indicated that. We go over to number eight. Please rank the following services in order of importance on a rating scale from one to five. Please prioritize the maintenance areas of importance to you on a rating scale from one to five, and consider the characteristics of the city. Which four are most important to you? And how do you prefer to stay informed as a citizen? This was Mr. Pace that says this is important to him. And then number 12, which social media do you use regularly? Because I was saying, oh, we only need one of these, but he says, no, these are two different questions that we can ask at any different kind of date. Then for the January sixth, the outline for that meeting, which we discussed earlier, is that the very brief presentation, which I have made as it pertains to budget engagement sessions, that actually deals with the pieces that speak to all of those factors that encompasses the land that's not taxable, where they are, all of that, also the information on the percentage, the percentage of the tax rate with the penny and all of that. And then provide some strategic areas of which we would like to propose to focus. So it will not be a long presentation, it'll probably be about five or six frames, then the polling with the clickers, it's not called the clickers, but the clickers. And then you open it up for your public to make what comments they want to make. But this will probably spur them to have some comments to make.
Yeah. I think...
Maybe I wasn't hearing you right, but this question, number three, about the people in your household, wouldn't we want to know if they have children in the public schools? Or they homeschool or private school or something? That really might make a difference in the answer to a question, to me.
Homeschool is very important.
You know, if you answer, I have children under age 18, then, you know, B is this, B is are they in public school, C is are they in private school, D is are they homeschool?
That's good. Census will...
Yes.
Thank you.
Looking at some of the questions, like example, question eight and question nine, I know we had an issue in the past, and I know it was brought forward, too. It looked like some of the numbers were skewed. Can we reverse that where one is not important? Because people usually number, number one, that's my first pick, number two is my second pick. Because we had that problem last time, and it was skewed in the wrong direction.
Five is the highest.
Yes.
That's what you want.
No, no, no. One would be the highest. It would be the reverse of this.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, because if you're going to look at it and say, well, this is my first choice, that's my second choice.
Oh, one is the most important.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Very good. All right. Very good. And five is the least important.
Yes.
All right. We did do that the last, we talked about that the last time.
Well, because we had some complaints on it, because in the past it wasn't that way, and then somehow it switched, and I think it confused some people.
Okay. Very good. Very good. Okay, we'll do the same for this.
So you're putting them in like order?
Yes. Yes. Okay.
One is number one.
The one is number one. Right. Which is, number one is number one.
Any other hands go up, ask for... All right. Is everybody comfortable with the layout for the six? Shannon?
I'm comfortable with the layout. However, I would, I would like us to consider adding a question.
Go ahead.
We get a lot of feedback in terms of how our citizens view our city, and I think that's something important. Do we have a positive image, negative image? What, 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 what would our image be in your eyes? So I think that's important data for us to look at, to see how our citizens view our city.
Do you want to know what's positive and what's negative?
Perhaps. We could put a couple, couple of things there. I hadn't thought about that just yet, but...
Why don't you give us some thought and circulate that?
Well, we could bring that back tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Okay.
I don't know if it's important or not, but how long has somebody lived in the city? I know we, we're asking this of city residents, but how long have they been a resident?
How long have they lived?
Yeah, because have you been here all your life, or have you just got here five years ago?
Five years, five to ten, something like that.
Different perspective.
Right.
It appears that you're trying to keep it so that you can quantify the answers, not get qualitative. Give me a way of addressing Shannon's concern. This is just not your, you all think about it for 24 hours. Would you recommend Portsmouth as a, to a friend or family member as a place to live, work, or play?
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
That's a good way, isn't it?
Okay.
Yeah. Yes or no?
Yeah.
Very good. Very good. Okay.
All right. So we'll, we'll see a portion of this tomorrow night.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Everybody, not to beat a divorce, want to make sure everybody's comfortable for the six.
Yes.
Okay. Paul, you good?
Yes, everyone's may have quietest of church minds.
I've heard that multiple times.
Oh, I'm, I'm good.
I'm good, sir. Yes.
All right. Which brings us to the letter from Mr. Moses Hines, which is to change the name of the park at Mount Hermit to the Bernard D. Griffin Senior Park of Mount Hermit. I support that. I don't know what our process is, we'll name in parks, but, you know...
I love it. Sorry, I didn't think of it.
Let's first find out what our, our reaction is.
I was going to tell you about Mr. Hines' calling, and I'm, I shared with him what was the process for him to send you a letter. He sent, he called, I called him back, and he shared, Mrs. Obelsby documented what he wanted in the note that I got. And, you know, he shared how he felt about Mr. Griffin, and that he didn't know what the process was. He didn't know if it started with the city manager where, and I told, I explained to him where, and I said, you need to send, his wife also was a part of the conversation, you need to send a letter to council for consideration. I also shared with him that council has us working on a, how do you name parks? How do you name whatever? That we have to bring back, and that thing...
Honorary streets.
Honorary streets and namings. And so with that, you received the letter.
My question to my colleagues first, is anybody opposed to this?
No.
Second, can we move, or do you feel comfortable moving on this even while our appointed staff is working on the process?
Yes.
I'm fine with the answer. Question, I'm 100% for it. I know that there has been some discussion about repairs being done out there. So could we do it in a timeframe that, once it's official, it would be when the repairs were complete? Instead of naming it before that's done? I don't know what the timeframe on that is.
Let's pick a date that's in January, so that we're putting this on a fast track.
It's already, I just gave, I'll bring you the report that I just gave. It's, it's, they're in the process, has to be awarded. We've got the cost, the money is there, but that's not going to be finished by January. Not the work.
That's all I'm saying, is I agree. I'm just saying we should have a re-grand opening with the name, with the new surfaces.
Why don't we do this? Why don't we consider a resolution in January to name the park with a ribbon cutting when it's done? And unveiling of the name?
Oh, that's a trend.
Yes.
All right. So if you will bring, with consensus of council, bring back a resolution at the first meeting in January.
Thirteen.
That names the park for this great man.
One correction on there. He was, he was at Western Branch High School, actually, not junior high.
That's in the bio.
Yeah.
That has, yeah. All right. So we have...
Is that the park on Mount Vernon Avenue?
No. Which is the one that, what's?
That's Mount Hermit Park. It's about 900 blocks of Mount Vernon.
That's, that's the one.
That's it. Hold on now, Mayor, because...
Right off from Turnpike.
You talking about the one about J.E. Parker? Is that the one you're thinking about?
The one we're working on with Mr.?
Mr. Hook?
That's, that's the one.
That's Mount Vernon Avenue.
Yes, that's the one. Yes.
All right. We're all clear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Resolution for the fourteenth meeting.
We need, too, to talk about the agenda for our retreat. And so we need to talk about that. I don't know what you're going to bring up, Shannon. This might be the one.
That's what I was going to bring up, Mayor. You just...
We participated in, Dr. Patton, Solomon, and Shannon participated in the telephone call with National League of Cities. And from that call, it would really be good if we could devote all of Saturday to the effort of, of race relations in Portsmouth.
Do what?
Devote all of Saturday into a session on race...
Do vote, not vote.
At the retreat.
Devote.
Spend the Saturday.
Where's the retreat?
Same place.
Did we discuss going to the same place?
Well, it was on the calendar.
Well, I didn't, I didn't get any memos on that.
Oh, it was in the calendar.
Calendar, we made it one...
Man, I really don't like that retreat. It's too far back up in the woods, and I will not go to that retreat, trust me.
Shannon, now...
You got to give me some signal lights, that we're going to have a retreat. I'm, I'm not comfortable back there.
With part of, not to take what you were going to say, but the, the NLC staff is impressive, and they've been making good facilitators for our discussion. Shannon?
Yes, and to the mayor's point, so we, we all participated, when I say we all, the mayor, myself, Dr. Patton, and Attorney Ashby, we participated in a conference call with Mr. Leon Andrews, who is the Director of the Race Equity and Leadership Initiative under the League of Cities. And they've had a lot of success in providing guidance and putting in programs and helping cities like Portsmouth to really kind of eliminate racial disparities, heal divisions, and build more equitable communities. So the mayor had talked about this as an initiative, working, working together collaboratively for us to bring a greater understanding from our racial histories and our backgrounds so that as we move forward as a city, we can work more together on solving the problems that affect all of us citizens. So I had called Mr. Andrews and, and put that meeting together, and the mayor, and, and Dr. Patton and Attorney Ashby, I think it was a good first start. They recommended, they meaning the folks at the National Leagues of Cities, and, and the REO program is what they call it, that we look into committing to a day of training because that, that's what they believe, we will get the best opportunity, right, 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 of the program. And they didn't, they didn't want to break it up or anything. So I know Dr. Patton is, is corresponding with them to find out how to put that all together, and she's going to be reporting back to us with the final information.
I think it's important that we get some buy-in tonight to have Dr. Patton continue to do that work. Anybody got a problem?
And if they need to come on Friday instead of Saturday, do we do that on Friday?
They couldn't do Friday.
Yeah, they kind of schedule a conflict.
You're saying we can be flexible. I can be flexible.
Are we paying them?
We have just, back from them with the email, there have been no information passed on exactly what and how they're presenting or working with us. So at this point, I don't know.
You know, I'm kind of embarrassed when we say something like that, that we got to get someone to come in to teach me or the group or both about race relations. Race relations is just one thing. Your heart and respect for one another. You can initiate anything you like, but it's all about changing hearts and attitudes toward one another. Understanding that I have a family and I love them, and I want the same thing for Bill's family that I want for mine. You see what I'm saying? So I'm embarrassed. We have somebody to come in to teach us, and we've been here, I mean, you're 100 years old, we've been here a long time.
Yeah, Ms. Payne's 100 years old.
And so I'm, I'm just embarrassed when somebody got to treat me like a...
I don't think that anybody will disagree with you, but let me say this. I think that, that it's a complex issue, because we go through life categorizing people. We make a, a choice by saying it's better off to be rich than poor, young versus old, tall versus short, and we do this subconsciously. And so I think we need, need to understand the complexities of how we categorize people. And I don't think there's anybody on council that disagrees with you, that it's about love and respect. But it is a complex, and saying it's that simple...
But that's the problem we have whenever we try to make something or life complex when it's really simple. We make it complex. We'll make a document complex, and we have the ability to make all things simple.
Okay.
But it deals with love and respect, and I, and I don't want to tudle about how to love you, because I love you.
Okay. Thank you.
I love your wife, your family. Christmas, I want the same thing for everybody's family that I want for mine.
We all share that.
And it's right here at the top, and that's where it starts, at the top. We exhibit this, and we'll get reception of that. We'll receive it, and it'll rub off.
All right.
So I have a concern, I mean, if Paul is saying he's not comfortable, if he's not going to be at the retreat, we want it to be inclusive of the whole council, for Dick's group at, at least, to be there for this event. And I don't know what other Saturday day we could propose for it, you know, to do that outside of...
Outside of the retreat?
Right. Because we did do a combined retreat last year with Blue Board, so, you know, that would be just in a TCC later in the year.
That was later than, that was the last day of the journal assembly.
How much time are they looking for?
Time in terms of...
Their whole day?
They need a whole day.
Whole day?
To be, to be effective, yes.
What's a whole day?
I would think from morning to afternoon, maybe eight to three, eight to four.
Eight to three.
Yeah.
Eight to three.
Mm-hmm.
The retreat is a perfect place to do that. I mean, I think a different way to consider Paul's concern. Is it the distance, Paul? Whatever, you're not comfortable. Is there a different venue that...
Well, I'm a city boy, and I, small city, big city, but give me some lights, cameras, some action, you know. Back there, it's, it's a desolate area, you know, and I, I don't like it back there.
I think it's just opposite. I think the fact that we do it out there gets away from the daily operations that allows us to be free and discuss and not have a bunch of distractions. And, you know, I've enjoyed the, the past times that we've been there, and I, I think it's a good location. And, you know, the last retreats we've had, in my mind, were very successful at that location.
All right. Let's, let's weigh in.
Well, I, I agree with, with what was proposed. Well, I, I, I agree with, with what was proposed, and I think we, we should all move forward with what was proposed.
Lisa.
Oh, I like the group coming to our retreat. I'm not a fan of the place either, but, you know, I can accommodate, you know, the group being there, but.
I'm, I'm fine with it. I can endure the black and white TV and, uh. I think it's fine.
I love the no cell phone.
Retreats don't work very well when they're in your own yard because you tend not to show up, or you, you duck out and take a telephone call that lasts for forty-five minutes. This way, you're kinda captured. All right. You had one?
I did. Another topic.
Okay.
This is kind of a question for Dr. Patton, and then it becomes a question for us. I'm talking about Christmas holidays. Christmas and New Year's Day both fall on a Wednesday, so what is the city holiday schedule, please?
Um, the Christmas holiday schedule is Tuesday and Wednesday, which is the twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth.
City halls closed.
That's for Christmas. For New Year's, um, it proposed right now that city employees would work Monday, Tuesday, and they're off the one day for New Year's Day.
And wasn't it last year that we added a day to New Year's?
You added a day because it failed, how New Year's is falling this year is how Christmas failed last year. So, you added a day to give city employees two days for that, for that Christmas. And this year, the city employees only have that one day, which is the thirty.
Which is the first.
Which is the first. So, the thirty-first, all city employees, uh, right now are scheduled to work.
Regular nine to five day.
Regular nine, eight to five. We don't come in at nine. Eight to five.
I'd like to recommend we consider the thirty-first as a paid holiday for all city employees.
A second.
A third.
Four.
Five. Six. Yes. Seven.
And let's, let's be serious. This is in recognition of the, the hard work that our city employees have done this year.
Absolutely.
I mean, they do a lot, and sometimes they're not appreciated. I want, I think we all want them to know that we appreciate what they do.
Absolutely.
All right, so we have some techaways for, uh, tonight to come back tomorrow. Oh, Bill had one. I'm sorry, Bill?
Oh, that's, that's all right.
I told you I wouldn't forget.
I took a number.
He's gonna bring numbers tomorrow night.
I think we, I think all of us are aware that, uh, we're gonna have a lot of visitors, perhaps, tomorrow night.
Yes.
Uh, on the sanctuary, uh, gun laws. So, I think we need to have a conversation. It's easier to have that conversation here than it will be, uh, in the formal session tomorrow night, how we address that. Obviously, it's not on the agenda. I, I'm sure y'all have gotten emails. I had a phone call on the way over tonight. The person who called me was under the impression that we're gonna be voting on it, which we're not, uh, as far as I know.
No, sir.
You looked surprised when I said that, but, uh, I, I told them that for us to vote on it, it would customary to be on the agenda, which it's not. I'm supportive. I don't thi, I don't think our General Assembly needs to be doing anything to endanger our, uh, Second Amendment. I think it would be good if we could, uh, draft, uh, a statement to that effect that we, we're supportive of the Second Amendment rights. Obviously, it's in our Constitution. But, uh, uh, you know, if it becomes law, this is not the body to determine whether that law is, is legal or illegal. Uh, someone would have to take it to the State Supreme Court to determine that. So, I guess what I'm saying is, uh, I would like for us to at least indicate that, uh, we're supportive of a person's Second Amendment rights. And also explain that, uh, it's our responsibility, in fact, it's our oath of office, to uphold the, uh, the Constitution of the United States as well as the, uh, Constitution of Virginia and the, obviously, the laws of our Commonwealth. And I'm saying this just to open up the discussion on whether y'all are in agreement to, uh, make a statement. I never, when, when it's a large turnout like that, uh, I never like to sit there like a bump on the log. If we could, uh, read something or make a statement, uh, prior to, I don't know how many having to speak, uh, it might serve them and us well to do that. If we are in agreement that, uh, we, we believe in the Second Amendment, and as a body, we certainly, it's not in our purview to do anything to jeopardize or to water that Second Amendment down.
Wouldn't it be appropriate just to say that we have taken an oath already to support and the Constitution?
Yes, because we're in favor of the second and the third and the fourth and the nineteenth and the fifteenth and all of them, so.
That goes without saying. That's in our oath of office.
Right.
Yeah. And, and I think that the point we're trying to make is that by spotlight just one, the oath spotlights all of it to include the Constitution. Paul, you, your hand went up?
When, um, the forefathers, founding fathers, put this thing together, we know that they were very intelligent. We know that they were intellectually sane, and we know that, that they were speaking from a, um, self-defense because of the times situation. But if we took the same intellectual group of guys and put them in this day and time, and they're gonna say, "Well, we gotta have some restrictions." And, uh, they are sitting back, probably laughing and disappointed at us because we don't realize that we need some type of restrictions. And, um, I love my guns. I love the Second Amendment, but we have to be sensible with it. We're not the ragtag gang of, uh, army guys running around in the woods and so forth and trying to throw a country together. We're industrialized nation, and it's entirely different than it is. You know, I don't wanna mess with it. Everybody's right to have one, but we got to realize that everybody will not do society, uh, any good by having them.
Did you have your hand up?
I did.
Okay.
To me, there's a, a very big difference between supporting the Virginia and the federal Constitution and supporting being a sanctuary city, which is currently against the law in the Commonwealth of Virginia. So, I'm not willing to support anything that is against the law in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
And I won't either.
Though that has no meaning, so.
Let's, let's get other people weighing in.
I've got one question. I'm gonna direct this to our attorney, and I know a lot of this is what ifs because the legislation has not passed yet. But in, in reference to this, if the state passes laws and come July first, it makes certain weapons, makes somebody immediately to be a felon, have it or whatever else. So, we have an officer in, in our jurisdiction, the city enforcement, that makes arrests based on one of these state laws. How does that open us up for a federal civil lawsuit for violating somebody's rights?
If, if the state law is in fact, a police officer is following state law, um, you would certainly have a challenge probably in federal court as to the constitutionality of a city ordinance or a state law. And then ultimately, that issue will be resolved in the courts. The, the scenario you provide is an interesting one in this discussion across the Commonwealth in that, um, those processes have always existed, and the concern, uh, from a legal standpoint is that one, uh, this, uh, I would advise that this body not set an expectation one way or another that would either have police officers trying to interpret, uh, a city resolution and trying to enforce, or for that matter, may put them in opposition with what they believe to be state or federal law for which they're trying to enforce. So, we, we have had in the history of this country at different points where the laws had to be harmonized or reconciled one against another. One of the concerns and the discussions across the Commonwealth right now is whether these resolutions are just laudatory or whether they will be, whether there's an expectation that there's an enforcement mechanism for what those resolutions say, and who will enforce, as you know, being in law enforcement. While I might be the city attorney and I interpret one way, the young ladies and the young men on the street are required to try to enforce also. And so while I, I certainly understand the spirit, uh, of this discussion, we will have some very interesting times until this kind of harmonizes going forward, and whatever happens in the General Assembly or doesn't happen in the General Assembly, uh, sort of comes together.
Well, I, I, I think the intent, uh, of the sanctuary city, I, I don't know about that, uh, resolution being illegal. People in cities, I think even in Virginia, have said that we're a sanctuary city when it comes to harboring illegal aliens. What these patriots are doing is saying that, uh, we wanna protect the, uh, Second Amendment. We don't want the, the, the police or anybody coming and confiscating our, our weapons. That's protected, uh, in the oath of office that we took to uphold the Constitution. So, uh, if it was up to me and I thought it would pass, I would make a motion that we would become a sanctuary city.
Would not.
Only reason that we would. I can, I've been around long enough to be able to count votes. I got a feeling that probably wouldn't pass. But, uh, I think, uh, I think it'd be good, and maybe we'll just do it individually, uh, express our thoughts on it as speakers come, without taking, uh, any official action.
Well, maybe it might be good to, to find out what. Well, I was gonna say, that prejudges tomorrow night, but let's just leave it where it is.
We may learn something tomorrow night that changes all our minds. You never know.
You never know. All right. If we expect a large crowd here, uh, we've had crowds before that we had to put in different places.
Yes.
What would those places be?
Well.
The lobbying?
We have the, we have the, we call this the foyer here, which has a capacity.
Okay.
And then we have the lobby on the first floor that has a capacity.
Okay.
Police and FAR are aware of the possibility. We knew the date after Suffolk's meeting. Yes, last week, um, the numbers that they expected and how they divided the individuals.
Can they, can they view the proceedings in those places?
They can only view the proceedings here on these TVs right here. Can we, can the TV on the first floor be programmed?
I'll check this.
All right, we will know that by tomorrow.
I think that would be a good idea if they could.
Okay. All right, we'll know that by noon.
Because you have TVs on both sides, one that faces east and one faces west.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Well, if it doesn't, if you can, if you have to just tinker with something, tinker with something.
We'll find out.
All right. Anything else for the good of the order?
There was, um, one, one more thing. After the planning commission, Mr. Youngblood came up to me and he asked about, Mr. Baldwin came and helped me out with that. There are no fishing and no crabbing signs right here, I think down by the old Holiday and site. Um, there are some citizens who are crabbing and fishing there, and they said there's no sign there. But is it legal? Is it not legal? You know, is the fish harmful for people to eat because of the marine waters? I mean, that was the conversation that we, Paul, that we had. And so there's no signs. I don't know if they went down or if they, somebody took them down or, um, so we just needed some action on that, 'cause I told them I would ask.
I'll, I'll throw two cents on that if I could. If it's not posted, they have a legal right to be there. So, you cannot enforce the fishing because I have been there before, and we have officers that would still enforce a fishing license because they're fishing there, they have to have a Virginia saltwater fishing license. So, that is enforced, but as far as them fishing from the boardwalk, that is something that the city would have to post to have actions done on it. And as far as the fish, there are no fish at this time. You're allowed to keep and consume fish from anywhere in the area. The only restrictions on anything are there certain areas for shellfish, oysters and clams. If they're in the mud or up on the shoreline, they're deemed polluted and condemned and can have fatal consequences, and you'll see those signs posted. But as far as the fish, there are no regulations on the fish anywhere in the tidal waters of Virginia.
While we're on the subject of fishing, I was out at, uh, City Park, uh, a couple weeks ago, and I noticed the, uh, one of the boat ramps, actually, the, the pier, uh, was shut down.
The fishing pier?
Not the fishing pier, the, the boat ramp.
The finger pier?
Yeah. If you could bring us on that and.
Before we depart that conversation, I mean, I have mixed feelings about fishing on the seawall. I think it looks really quaint, and I, you know, I get the, the understanding that people, you know, they cut bait, leave it on the. I'm not ready to do a total ban on the seawall. This might be one of these things where just leave it alone.
Let's leave it alone for a while. I agree. Because so far, I've had a lot of folks tell me, walking their dogs, they've seen kids and all out there and catching things, and, and how tidy it has been.
Yeah.
Nobody's leaving stuff.
And that's, that's, uh, and that's the thing. It's, it's, I think it's great to out there fishing, you know, we support that. It's like we've had similar issues, but the issues at other places, for example, the pedestrian walkway on the West Norfolk Bridge. It's posted, no fishing from the walkway. And the reason that is, is not because you don't want people fishing, it's because the people that have been fishing there in the past don't know how to act. They leave trash, they use it as a restroom, and it's just, it's just a mess. So, that's why the city shut that down, because of the byproduct of the fishing. It's not the problem with the fishing. And so I, I, I think it's fine to let them fish, fish on the, the seawall until a problem exists.
Okay. Am I good on that? And there was a question about duck blind, and that might be good for it to be publicized. Let's take this opportunity. Will you explain?
As far as the email that came, we had some complaints from Riverside Road, and there's, we've had complaints in years past as far as duck blinds and people shooting. The duck blinds, you can't just go out there and throw a duck blind anywhere you want to. Those duck blinds are permitted through the Department of Game and Inland Fisheries, and they also have the regulations. If there's already a duck blind in one place, there's a minimum distance that anybody else can apply to put a permit in to put another one in that distance. As far as the shooting, they're out there shooting, one is birdshot because they're hunting ducks, and usually they're aiming away from the residents. The discharge of a firearm within city limits really doesn't carry over into the water because that's state bottom, because my agent, agency doesn't really deal as much with the hunting, although we can. That's more the game wardens, but we patrol the same waters, so our regulations, we cross over and enforce on opposite sides. But that's, that's been going on forever, the duck blinds. There's a lot of them around, people don't even realize that are even active. There's, uh, you know, when you go over the bridge, going over to the mouth of Chuck Duck Creek in Nazman, you'll see the duck blinds out there. We even have duck blinds over here near the, uh, what is it, the old Purdue plant or whatever it is up in Elizabeth River, back in that cove. There's, because I know one of the, one of our officers hunts those duck blinds. So, it's really not an issue that we can take on as the city that falls under the state laws and really falls. state laws, and really falls under the game warden's purview, or, well, they changed the name, they're not game wardens, they're conservation police.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I might, and this has been a discussion that different council members have had over the last six months or so.
Is this a new subject?
No, it's the same subject Councilman Clark was addressing, and that is, at various points, we will have citizens inquire of conservation officers about various forms of hunting and whatnot in or near their property. The city has laws about gunfire, they generally kick in when you endanger households, we don't have a per foot limit, it is, you know, shooting across the street, when it endangers a house or a roadway, then the city laws kick in. We don't have a perimeter sort of law, which I think most folks are thinking of. And what we do have is, unfortunately, the conservation officers talk about it in such a fashion as if Portsmouth has given up some particular rights. We have not done that, but there again, the enforcement becomes an issue when you endanger the households. So, Portsmouth does have laws that will address that issue, but typically, we have an issue, as Councilman Clark is saying, in the waterway, in the middle, on the edge of a property, away from a household, but still, some residential folks have an issue with the noise or the disruption.
Everybody happy?
Yeah, I was going to ask Mr. Clark if he could explain, because there's people who will hear this and not know what a duck blind is.
Well, basically, a duck blind, where you can have what they call a permanent, basically, basically, a duck blind is a structure that usually makes standing in the water, that basically, they can hide in. The duck hunters, they have to have a permit to do it, you know, it could be as simple as four pylons driven in the water, and they have a bunch of brush and put it around, it's a place for them to hide, is really what it is. They hide and they wait for the ducks to come by, and then they pop up, shoot the ducks.
We have duck blinds in our waters that have come through.
That's where the complaint comes from, it's in the Elizabeth River, near Cranny Island off Riverside Road.
Yeah, we ain't seen it.
You need to go duck hunting.
I do.
I'll come with my boat one day, and I'll take you, I'll take you out there.
I want to go.
It's at four o'clock, and it's cold and wet.
Vice Mayor says she ought to go.
I want to go.
Vice said, you know what the duck blind was?
I did not.
I said I didn't know what it was.
I was going to ask him that.
I'm going to ask my question again, is everybody happy?
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned for the afternoon.